It's five o'clock, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I'm calling this session of City Council, Bastrop City Council to order. We are very pleased and very proud to have three of our Navy Junior ROTC seniors here to lead us in the pledge. We have Commanding Officer Lieutenant Commander Matty Pickering. We have Lieutenant Shayla Tengen and Chief Petty Officer Connor Shaw. Would you all please approach him? Would everybody please stand?
Forward, march, left, 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 detour, halt, face flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Cadets, cadet pledge.
Ma'am, this cadet's cadet pledge is...
I am a Navy Junior ROTC cadet. I'll always conduct myself in a manner to be courteous to my family, school, and corps cadets. I am the future United States of America. I am loyal and patriotic. I'm not lie, cheat, thorn, tarred those who do. I'll always be accountable for my actions and deeds. I'll always practice citizenship. I will guard for my mind, strength, and my body. I will seek the mantle of leadership, stand, parrot, uphold the Constitution of the United States. Hoorah! To the rear, march. Left, 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 right, right, right.
Let's give these a round of applause. I also want to thank Chief Canales for his efforts in working with these fine young folks. Thank you, sir. Moving on, we'll go to the invocation, and we'll have Reverend Bob Long lead us in that.
Please join me in prayer. Father God, as we come before you, we come humbly but with boldness to your throne of grace, to receive mercy and obtain grace in time of need. And I pray for this city council. I thank you for each and every one of them. I pray for our mayor. Lord, I pray for our city manager and secretary and all those that are in the audience and those who will present tonight and those who will listen. Give them ears to hear and give them your wisdom and knowledge and discernment and understanding and the grace to do your will and the faith to overcome any obstacle for our city. We thank you for our law enforcement community. We pray for our police officers. We pray for the first responders, for our fire department, and all those who work out from this place. But we pray for everyone in this facility that works every day to support our city. We're grateful to be a part of Bastrop, Texas, and we pray, Lord, that you will be with this council meeting and lead them by your spirit tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Y'all may be seated. Thank you, Reverend Long. We really appreciate your efforts on behalf of the city and your spiritual guidance, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Council, we have a couple of short presentations here. During the past week, two members of our council celebrated birthdays. So I want to give this card to Councilmember Plunkett and walk over here and give this card to Councilmember Meyer and wish y'all a happy birthday. I'm not going to sing to y'all because I don't want to ruin anybody's time, but we're happy y'all were born. But really appreciate y'all so very much. We're going to forego any mayor's report or council members' reports so we can move right on to the agenda. We're going to move to item four D, a proclamation of the city council. The city of Bastrop, Texas, recognizes October third, two thousand twenty-three as National Night Out. I will ask our police chief, Chief Stefanik, to step forward, please.
I'm going to read it when you're standing up there.
Whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring place to live, and whereas National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. And whereas millions of neighbors take part in National Night Out across thousands of communities from all fifty states, U.S. territories, military bases worldwide, and whereas the city of Bastrop plays a vital role in assisting the Bastrop Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the city of Bastrop by supporting the National Night Out two thousand twenty-three locally, and whereas National Night Out provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under positive circumstance. Therefore, I, Law Nelson, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the evening of October third as National Night Out. And I've even signed it. Chief, thank you for all your participation in this. This is one of our most enjoyable events since I've been on council previous, and I want to continue that tradition. Thank you. Thank you. Would Reverend Bernie Jackson step up, please? Calling her up, y'all will find out soon. Whereas in just one day in two thousand twenty-two, across the U.S. and its territories, over seventy thousand thirty-two victims of domestic violence sought services for domestic violence programs and shelters. That same day, more than nine thousand four hundred and forty-four requests for services, including emergency shelter, housing, transportation, childcare, and legal representation, could not be provided because programs lacked the resources to meet victims' needs. Whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community throughout the United States and the world. Whereas the need for safe housing continues to be rated as Survivor's Most Urgent Need, whereas the city of Bastrop joins with others across Texas and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state conditions, state coalitions, I apologize, national organizations, other agencies nationwide who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated. Whereas domestic violence impacts millions of people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires a collective voice and power of individuals. Whereas in the city of Bastrop, in recognition of the port work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim service providers, I urge all our citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities. Now, therefore, I, Law Nelson, Mayor of the city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim October two thousand twenty-three as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Bastrop. Reverend Jackson, thank you so much for your efforts at the founding process center. We really appreciate it. Appreciate the work, but something we can do to help continue to prosper with this service. Let's get a picture. Let's give Reverend Jackson a round of applause for the programs she participates in. We will move on to no work sessions or briefing scheduled, no staff and board reports. We'll move right to citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up?
No, Mayor.
That does weigh but citizen comments. We will move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any member of council wishes to remove? Is there any item that any of the audience wishes removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor, item eight B on the consent agenda is scheduled for August, I'm sorry, September twenty-sixth, as opposed to the October nineteenth, so item eight B must be pulled and cannot be acted on tonight. It was advertised for nine twenty-six.
Council, eight, B has been removed from tonight's consent agenda. With that being said, Madam Secretary, will you read the consent agenda?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item eight A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. Item eight C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number two zero two three dash three two of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, to amend article four point zero four. Peddlers, solicitors, and vendors and adopt division four requirements applicable for mobile food vendors in the Bastrop, Texas Code of Ordinances, providing for findings of fact, purpose, adoption, and amendment, repealer, severability, enforcement, effective date, and property notice and meeting. This concludes the consent agenda.
Council, city secretary has laid out the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to have a...
I have a motion and I have a second. I have a motion from Councilmember Lee and a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Madam Secretary, if you'll read the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Thank you, council. We will move on to item nine, items for individual consideration. The first, first item would be item nine A, hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first read of ordinance number two zero two three dash three eight of the city council of the city of Bastrop, establishing and adopting transportation impact fees amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirteen, Article thirteen point one two, by NAC, thirteen point one two point zero nine four through thirteen point one two point zero nine nine, providing for definitions, providing for assessment of said impact fees, providing for the general administration of said impact fees, providing for a severability clause, providing for an effective date, and an open meeting clause, providing adoption, repealer, severability, filing and enforcement, establishing an effective date, providing for proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting for a second reading. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam City... Oh, no, your presentation. Please go ahead.
Sure. Going to introduce Jake with Kim Lee Horn. Jake has been presenting to Planning Commission for the better part of six months as we've worked through a transportation impact fee. This is the final report that requires a public hearing and subsequent action. I don't foresee us having any action tonight, but I do foresee a lot of dialogue, as I've been in touch with each of you. So essentially, the transportation impact fee applies to all new development. It helps pay for roads, all new development. So Jake, take it away.
Mayor and council, thank y'all for having me tonight. It's a pleasure to be with y'all. We've been spending quite a bit of time with the impact fee advisory committee the last few months, talking through this topic, including the actual reports that we put together to be compliant with state law. As a quick note, I'll note a few things. As the city manager mentioned about new development, impact fees are for specifically new development, which would be defined as things that increase traffic demand on the roads. So anything that would actually be developed or redeveloped that would do that is what this is intended to be applied to. And those fees are a one-time fee that are paid at building permits. So just to be clear on that, that's how these fees are applied. There's a big chunk of the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter three ninety-five... Sorry.
Yeah, they're all off.
Chapter three ninety-five of the Texas Local Government Code governs impact fees, including roadway, water, wastewater, and drainage. So I know that the city has some of those today. We're going to be talking about roadway, or in this case, we've dubbed these transportation impact fees. Might not be working to advance forward. There we go. So a couple of things we'll cover tonight. We'll talk a little bit about the maximum fee final results. I mentioned that we did a study to be compliant with that state law, Chapter three ninety-five. What this does is it looks and says, what would be the impact of ten years of growth in Bastrop and the current city limits, and how much would that impact be in terms of dollars based on projects needed to serve that growth in ten years? That's what the whole study represents. What that does is it just sets a threshold for this body to determine you could charge any fee up to that amount, including zero dollars if you wanted to charge that, if you were to adopt the study in the maximum fee, which is an action we could do tonight. And then the rest of it would be about, would you collect any money or anything or not? Things went blank, but that's okay. So I'll also cover what the impact fee advisory committee recommended to this council tonight, and then we'll have plenty of time for discussion, as referenced by the city manager. As I mentioned, we've been at this for a little while. We started in November of two thousand twenty-two. We have had meetings, again, I believe five or six meetings with the impact fee committee to get to the recommendation. From this point forward, we have to do the public hearing, take an action on the study itself, which establishes what could be maximum fees, and then that does not mean that you're establishing to collect any fees that would be part of an ordinance if you would choose to do so. That's all that does, is it establishes the maximum rates. So that's where we're at. So a very short summary of the study. Roadway impact fees are special, and I don't mean that in a weird way, but it's true. Water and wastewater impact fees can be charged in your ETJ within the CCN coverage areas of water and wastewater service. Roadway impact fees can only be charged in your corporate city limits. So that's one really important distinction to understand about these, is that whatever the study is done and completed and the service areas are established, they're locked in at the city limits at that time. You would have to revisit that and discuss if you want to expand those to include new annexations and revisit those. So it's one weird limitation of the law. The other strange limitation on roadway impact fees that's different from water and wastewater is they can't be larger than six miles, and it's that vague. It literally just says it can be no more than six miles. We tend to interpret that when we put these studies together as a six-mile trip length. So when we looked at the city, you can actually go about eight and a half miles on seventy-one through town, which is in the city limits. So we decided to be compliant with the law. We would choose a logical split point, which was roughly the Colorado River, and have an east and a west zone. For administering this, what does that mean practically? It means that your needs on east and the west side of the Colorado are a little bit different. So when you see this chart on the screen here, A represents the green area on the west side of town, and the pink or purplish tone is on the east side of town. The maximums that you could charge in those is a number called a maximum fee per vehicle mile. The other thing that makes roadway impact fees a little confusing is we have to convert those based on transportation traffic. With water and wastewater, that's really simple. It's usually a water meter or another device that's put on for a facility. For transportation, we have a big fat chart, as I like to call it, that converts the amount of traffic generated by different developments. So that number's kind of unitless, so the way I like to say it, it doesn't make a whole lot of logical sense, so we convert that to a single-family house lot. So what that means is, is based on the analysis we've been doing and we worked through with the committee, on the west side of town, you could charge up to eighty-six forty-four per house. On the east side, you could charge up to five thousand two hundred and four per house, backing into these rates, which would apply differently for different kinds of development. I'll show you some comparisons in a minute to what other cities are charging. As another backdrop, this is just what you could charge. Is there any questions on that? Yes.
Jake, just real quick, an explanation of them, why one is higher than the other as it relates to growth potential?
Yes, I can explain why those are different. So when we looked at this, you have a pretty tremendous amount of growth on the west side with applications for development coming in that I'm sure y'all are aware of, but you also have a lot more infrastructure needs on that side as well. The east side is a little bit more built out where you're downtown. Your old plattas with the grid streets, so you have a little bit less of a need for infrastructure relative to growth. So that number, if I may, it represents, it's really simple, to bake it down really simply, it's the cost of projects needed in that area divided by the growth in that area. So those two things play into that number, but effectively what it means is the cost to serve the growth is higher on the west side of town, just based on the need that's looking at that there. So those two things go into that. Anything else? Good? Okay, great. So how would you apply something like this? So this would be an example of an apartment complex, let's just say. If you applied the maximum fee on the east side, that's the lower one, and it was about fourteen hundred dollars per unit of one vehicle traveling one mile in the afternoon, that's what that is, and you converted that out for a three hundred and fifty unit complex, theoretically, based on the study, could charge just shy of a million dollars for that development. That's what the actual impact that we've measured, based on the growth that's coming and the projects that are needed in that area. That's what a typical development of that size would pay towards the impact fee if it was the maximum, and we're not saying the maximum. Y'all get to decide what's the appropriate rate for those. We do have a recommendation, and I'll talk through that from the committee, Impact Fee Advisory Committee, but that's what that means. The collection rate is whatever you would decide to put in that ordinance. We have a draft one today that we brought for the first reading that goes with that. Effectively, and I'll go through this in more detail, that five hundred dollars is not the right number. That was more of just a simple determination of it's less than the maximum. That group decided that they thought it would make sense to have a flat rate across the city where you're not charging different amounts based on which side of town you're in. So if you wanted to put this apartment complex on the east side or the west side of town, you pay the same amount. That's what they put before y'all as a flat rate across town. And what they did is they put that as sixty-five percent of the maximum in the lower limiting, the lower maximum area. That's how they came, we worked through that with them. It was basically the average of averages across the two areas is kind of where we landed on that number. So I'll go into more detail on that. So speaking of that recommendation, a couple of things I want to cover from that Texas Local Government Code. These fees also are not applicable to public schools. They can't be charged. That's specifically called out in the law. And then there's this very specific definition from the Code of Federal Regulations for Affordable Housing. This is the federal definition, which is usually a very low percentage of the median gross income. It's usually somewhere in the twenty to thirty percent of the median gross income, very, very, very low-cost units. We rarely see applicants meet this threshold for criteria, but it is exempt if someone were to bring a federally affordable housing project to Bastrop. That's what that is. What is this pie chart? So this is an explanation of what that decision point on collection rate is. So when you look at the total pie for Bastrop, we looked at all the projects in those ten years. It was about a hundred and fifteen million dollars in projects that were needed in the next ten years, working with staff. Of that, certain pieces we cannot charge as part of this fee. So that's why I want to be really clear about is that this fee is not, if you choose to adopt it, it does not cover all your needs by any stretch of the imagination. So we cannot charge for existing cars on the road. So the red piece of the pie, we looked at traffic counts around town and said, whatever capacity is being used today, we're going to pull that out of our math for where these future widenings and projects are. There's also a requirement to do a credit for future property taxes from growth from the state law. We went through and did a mathematical calculation on that. It's about twelve percent, it's in the blue section here, of what your, that one hundred and fifteen million would be is future property tax revenues from the ten years of growth. That's what that expected to be. And then in addition to that, if we build roads that are bigger than are needed at the ten-year mark, we have to reduce some of that for future growth and capacity. So what we're left with is the green and the yellow. So when I say the maximum fees are about fifty-two hundred and eighty-six hundred dollars per house on the east and west side, that is just the remaining piece that's left over, which is about half of what you've got in terms of total need. So that's about sixty-ish million of the hundred and fifteen of total need. So we say we're going to charge, when I mentioned earlier about the impact fees recommendation, when you see sixty-five percent of the maximum, that's not sixty-five percent of need. That's sixty-five percent of what you could charge in the green and the yellow on here. Any questions on that?
I have a question.
Yes.
When you said that group, you're referring to the zoning commission on the recommendation of A and B not be separate, and sixty-five percent is the rate?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, and we'll see the picture on that in just a second here. So a lot of numbers up on the screen, I'll go through them pretty briefly. So we got this recommendation on August thirty-first. So I have a residential slide and a non-residential slide to explain how this would be applied. So I've been talking about single-family houses. In the greater Austin area, the range of charges for a single-family house for roadway impact fees or transportation impact fees is anywhere from five hundred and eighty dollars per house in the low end up to over almost seven thousand dollars per house. The variation in that has a lot of different factors. The really low end is an area in Leander that has, doesn't have a whole lot of growth left in it or projects to do, so it was really, it's kind of more of a dense area that they're building some stuff there. The higher end is Flugerville for that one. They were having to try to keep up with the growth that they're dealing with, and so they elected to charge a higher proportion of their maximum. The two again up on here for that is eighty-six forty-four and fifty-two oh four. The recommendation from the impact fee advisory committee, and you'll see this for a lot of these numbers in the green column, is what that represents, is roughly in the middle of the range of rates from other cities today. It's kind of right smack dab in the middle. And they got to that from a flat rate that was about two-thirds of the lower cost area or the lower recovery area on the east side of B. There's a difference here, though, I'll note, for the different types of units, and I'll explain that. So you mentioned, I mentioned earlier that big fat chart to convert things, since we don't have a meter size. Apartments and duplexes, they generate a lower amount of traffic per unit than a single-family house, just based on a bunch of national studies that went into how we did all this math and fancy stuff. So you're actually, per unit for a duplex, it's about sixty percent of the single-family house, and it's about forty percent of a single-family house for an apartment. And that's based on national travel data from some fancy manuals that are out there that we use a lot of the time. So practically applying this, if you have a single lot with two houses, or sorry, a duplex on it, it's two thousand fifty per unit is what they're recommending, so it'd actually be a little over four thousand for the lot, because it's per unit. Same thing for apartments, you got a lot of units on the land, so you're actually getting a decent amount for that lot size, but it's not the same amount per unit. That's what they're recommending, and that's, the only function of that was just based on the amount of traffic coming out of these units. For non-residential, to try to put it in simplest terms, we're looking at the dollars per square foot of space for different types of lane uses. So for these, per square foot in other cities, for an office, it's between about a dollar and a half up to just over six dollars is what other folks are charging. Again, the impact fee, or the advisory committee landed right around the middle of that with this sixty-five percent number at about four sixty-six. For industrial, again, there's a range there of about a dollar twelve to five seventy. The committee landed in the middle at three fifty-eight per square foot. And then for a shopping center, we're talking about kind of a strip retail type development with shopping in it of various kinds, there's a pretty big range for other cities on that one. And again, the committee kind of fell in the middle to the, a little bit lower than the median of those when they did this. Some cities have chose to charge different rates. And quick background on the non-residential piece, some cities are charging as low as ten percent of the maximum. The city that's doing that doesn't have economic development dollars, and so they're trying to do that as a way to try to encourage growth from non-residential. That was the reason behind their ten percent number of their maximum. Other cities are anywhere from twenty up to fifty percent of the maximum. The higher end of that, again, was Flugerville for about fifty percent of the non-residential maximums. And then for the residential for other cities, folks are anywhere from, again, about forty percent, so a little bit higher percent of the maximums, all the way up to about seventy-five percent of the maximum, depending where they are. So generally, the trend line we're seeing in the local economy and other places that have implemented these, they're a little bit higher from a percentage of maximum for residential than non-residential. It's just a general trend we've observed. The other piece of this is, when would you want to collect if you were to collect? So we have some other cities around y'all that have gone before in the last five or so years. The state law, the only prescription on this says that if you have a plat, if this were to go into effect, you cannot collect any building permit dollars. Remember, it's a one-time fee at building permit from the previously plotted properties. So anybody who's already got a plat, if this were to go into effect, they'd have a year. The impact fee committee had recommended that we extend that to all properties so that you don't have someone who's in the development pipeline that isn't aware, they come and plat a week later if this were to go into effect, and then they have to pay at building permit somehow in that first year. That was their recommendation. Other cities, as you'll see, have shorter or longer periods than that. The most common is somewhere around the eighteen to twenty-four month range is a fairly common one that we've seen for other communities, and then other communities have applied additional exemptions for pre-existing development agreements, traffic studies, things like that. It's kind of the general trend we're seeing from other communities. The most intensive of that was the city of Georgetown. They actually said that if you submit a preliminary plat within two years of the effective date, that you're exempt from the impact fee. So they gave folks two years to get a prelim plat in. That was the most extreme. On the giving time, the least amount of time that was given was Flugerville, where they said, we're going to extend three months to get your plats in for that one-year grace period. That's pretty much what they did for theirs. So questions on those? Okay?
Move on.
We'll keep moving. So again, that was the recommendation from, impact fee committee was just to go ahead and not collect for one year and give everybody a year to kind of get used to the what's coming of the new system. That was the recommendation. And that's what I have for that. We have potential action tonight on the study and the maximum fee and some next steps. I'll run through those, and then we can do the next elements and the discussion. So tonight, if you wanted to, you could adopt the study with the maximum fees, which would at least set the baseline. The studies only need to be redone every five years per the law, so that would be valid for that period, based on the law, if you were to take action today. So you have five years to implement or not implement from that time until it expires. And then the draft ordinance that's before you for the first reading has what the impact fee committee had recommended, which was just the one-year full grace period and then the sixty-five percent of the maximum in the east side service area B, and there's. From here, once, the one stipulation of the law is, is if a public hearing closes, then you have thirty calendar days to either adopt or not adopt, or else you have to go back through the process of setting a date for a public hearing as council resolution, advertising, and holding another public hearing. So that would be the one thing, if you were to close a public hearing and not act in thirty days, then you would have to kind of go back through the process again. then you'd have to kind of go back through the process again. So that is what I have and ready for questions.
Counsel, any questions? I see your microphone on, but. Uh, Councilmember Crouch.
I had a, a couple of questions. Who, who comprised the committee?
The Impact Fee Committee, if I'm not mistaken, is mostly Planning and Zoning Commission. And that is, the one requirement is that the law says you can use your Planning and Zoning Commission or a committee with at least forty percent of the members being part of the development community. It doesn't go beyond that of what, what's required, but the development community's voice is supposed to be present on that group.
And then how, how many people were on it?
I believe it was seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
And then I had a question with the, um, your slide that shows, showed the houses versus apartments' cost per trip. Or if you can go back to that slide, sorry.
Oops, hold on. It's about this one or the?
Yes, so I didn't really understand your reasoning on a, a unit in an apartment complex having less travel than a, a single-family home travel.
Sure, yeah. So that two that's in the, the formula there, that is based off of, of two things. One, it's the, we call it the trip rate. That's based off of something called the Trip Generation Manual. It's published every so often by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's a national thing that looks at, they go out and do traffic counts of similar development types and studies, and they create a general rate of traffic generated by the different development types. So that's been established as a national resource. We use that manual, the eleventh edition, which was published in twenty twenty-one for this study. The other piece of that is trip length. So there's two pieces to that, that two number. How far do people go and how much do they leave the residents or the, or go to those places? That was based on a cellphone data collected fancy big data model that looks at traffic in Bastrop specifically. And so we developed, does someone go two miles on average to go to, let's say it's the, the, the fast food place to go to their house from work, those kind of things. And there's a, a big chart in the, the study and the ordinance that shows those two numbers and how they calculate to convert.
So, so the apartment community travels less distance and less often than a single-family home?
Yes, based on, based on the data that's out there, that's, that's accurate, yes.
Okay, so, because it was quite a significant reduction between, it was like three thousand for the house and one thousand for the apartment unit, right?
Yeah, it's the, per, per apart, per, sorry, duplex unit, it's about sixty percent of the single-family, going the wrong way, I'm sorry about that. It's about sixty percent of the single-family unit. And then for each apartment, it's about forty percent per unit, yeah. That's, that's what we're seeing. There's a lot of factors that go into that. Some of it's car ownership rates, some of it's just income levels for those kind of things. But in general, what we're, the national data says that's what that, that rate is.
Okay. Uh, the, the phasing, so there, you showed several cities that phased in the impact fee.
Correct.
Do you suggest one versus the other? I mean, you have a pretty good broad range of everything up there.
Yeah, so what we have found is simpler is better, is a good rule of thumb, and I'll explain why. So we have communities like Round Rock who actually have, they're starting their third phase in January when they started collecting in twenty twenty. So they're continuing to phase things in. We have some other cities that are only showing one phase. The reason we've said that simpler is better is it's good to see how that first rate starts coming and collecting money in. And then as counsel, if you feel like that needs to go down or up either way in terms of collections and seeing what the collections are relative to the need, then you can reassess that over time and then change the phase at that time, responding to need. If you do a phased-in rate, all you're doing is you're setting up a system where for staff, they're going to have to be tracking the plat dates on each property and applying the building permits correctly. So if the plat date is different, then they might be at a different rate based on the phasing. So that's what locks you in is the date you plat. So there's pros and cons to both. Phasing in from a development standpoint, maybe that allows you to get used to the system and it can slowly ratchet up. But in our experience, working with communities that have these in place for longer periods of time, you have more opportunities to revisit that and change it if need be in the, in between as opposed to setting it at the forefront.
Councilmember Crouch, from a, from a phasing standpoint, and I just speak for staff who goes and looks at the plats and is following. The Impact Fee Committee Planning Commission recommended twelve months. I think from a staff perspective, we would be okay with eighteen months. And that's because a preliminary plat expires after two years anyway. If they're not making significant progress toward final plat in that area, the chances that it's even going to come to fruition are, are slim to none. So, you know, that is an adequate amount of time to determine whether or not this is, this is going to happen. Twelve months, they're, sometimes they're still working toward some public improvements and trying to make those public improvements work or some other type of agreement.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that. I, I understand it. I was just curious, there's such a broad range of the, the phasing and the delay, say from Georgetown to Flugerville was, was not in day. And it seemed like Flugerville, they still had to wait the twelve-month mandatory, right? Or did that not be in effect back then?
So in theory, the way they set it up, so they said that we'll give you three months to get your plats in and still be under the twelve-month period. But they had some properties that came in the week after the three-month extension expired that could come in and pull a building permit in that first year and still pay. So that's, that is, that's the absolute minimum almost at that point. But our understanding and working with a lot of different cities is having time to get set up from a accounting standpoint, from a planning standpoint, to be ready as applications roll in and be able to educate folks, takes a little bit of time to, to get there. So we found that that's successful to kind of have a no collection period for a period of time and then start it all in earnest at the same time.
Okay.
And I have a map that I'd like Colin to bring up at some point as we talk through implementation and what the fee is, because I want you to hyperventilate a little bit with me.
Okay, I had a question too. I'm, I'm happy to skip around, I don't want to just sit here.
I have a follow-up question to one of your questions on there. When you had said that on the varying cost between multifamily and single-family dwellings, the cost was based upon some national data. Was that data separated between urbanized and rural areas? Because there's substantial access to other transportation modes in urbanized areas and not in the rural areas?
Yes, so there's, there's a couple of different options in that manual for the types of areas. There is a more of a generic blended rate, that's what we use to kind of cover both. There are some for urban areas, but a lot of those are more of like a, a downtown type setting like in Austin where you really have high degree of density and compactness. So the most appropriate one we felt was the kind of general, the generalized one that covered a broad range of types, kind of a blended rate.
Okay, thank you.
Can you explain how a development that's in the ETJ or right outside of the ETJ, as it's coming online to get annexed into the city, how that property or development will be treated as far as the tax and when that could be collected or never collected, depending on ETJ out of the ETJ city limits? Because there's a lot of stuff coming in that I'm not clear as to when it would be taxed or if it would ever be taxed.
So the short answer to that is that the, the way the law reads, it is limited to the areas established in this study. So the current city limits, even if you annexed, this wouldn't apply to you unless those maps are updated. Now, what's happened with a lot of cities around this area, and I'll back up maybe ten years on the timeline for that, is in the metroplex area, they've, a lot of cities up there in DFW, Dallas, Fort Worth, they've had these in place for fifteen or twenty years. They just elected to not go after the annexed areas and try to get them to pay impact fees. They just said that we'll wait for the next update and we'll catch some of them, but we won't catch all of them. In central Texas, with the growth rates exceeding ten percent in a lot of communities, what we're seeing now is that these studies and maps are being brought back for administrative or minor amendments to clarify a new annexation and say that those are applied. Other places have looked to try to make that part of the annexation agreement process to say that we will annex into this area, update the map as you go, and then pay that fee as part of the annexation proceedings. So there's different ways of handling it. If they stay in the ETJ and they don't annex, this just is never going to apply to them. So if it's like a mud or something else out there, it'll never apply. And then if you're outside the ETJ in the county, it most certainly won't apply because I don't think we're seeing many folks coming to annex with the recent state legislation, so, from further out.
Some of that is where we lie in a rock and a hard place with our prior development agreement.
Yeah. The sixty-five percent, which is what was recommended, how is that based on other, other comparable cities?
As a percentage of the maximum? It falls in the range. It's near the, it's, it's on the higher end as a percentage of the maximum for the, the non-residential. For the residential, it's kind of in the middle. I will say though, that they picked sixty-five percent of the lowest area to try to blend across the two. So it's not sixty-five percent of the west side, it's actually much less than that. It's probably in the thirty-five to forty percent. So that'd be, depends on which area you're looking at, is the short answer to that question. But for the B area that it's based on, yeah, it's on the upper end for commercial and, and kind of in the middle for residential.
Okay, and then I'm going to ask you to go back and look at one more slide. It might have been one of your very first ones too, I'm sorry about that. But it was the, the two areas. So you had a yellow area and a, there, that one. So can you explain one more time the difference between maximum in area A versus a maximum in area B? And I know it has to do with the existing infrastructure you said was part of that reason.
Yeah, so there's, in the full report, in the backup, a lot of math to get there is the short answer. But the most simplest way to explain it is it's the costs that can be recovered from that pie chart I showed. So the part that's not related to existing demand doesn't include the property tax or future growth. It's that recoverable cost of projects that are identified as needed in ten years, divided by the units of growth, based on looking at all the development applications and things coming in over the next ten years. And so on the west side of town in A, the number, the recoverable cost of projects per unit of growth was about thirty, forty percent higher than on the east side, just based on the projects identified and the amount of growth projected in those two areas.
Okay. Okay, that's all my questions for right now.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Kirkman.
So I also had questions on that annexation topic. So I think you clarified it. So as long as we update our, update the map as part of the annexation agreements, then we can continue to charge this impact fee for even newly annexed property.
You could. The one, one caveat I'll add to that is the intent of those minor updates would be is that it wouldn't impact the actual, this fee calculation. If y'all were to decide that that annexation substantially impacted the two numbers I just mentioned, the costs of projects or the, the growth in a significant way, you might want to consider doing a redo of that math to get these numbers again. And.
I think we're already due for a math redo, based on last week alone.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, good.
The, the state law only says you have to redo that equation every five years. Other places are starting to look at maybe doing it more fre, uh, Round Rock is doing their five-year update right now and they're talking about possibly doing it more frequently because of their growth.
So I, you know, as I read through the ordinance that we have here and asked a bunch of questions and then answered my questions as I read through it and such, this ordinance doesn't seem to say what you said here today. And that is that it maintains a service area A and a service area B, and it multiplies both numbers times sixty-five percent to come up with a different collection rate, depending on which area you're in. And then the calculations, which are spelled out in English for how to calculate the amount, uses that number from those various tables. So it doesn't have a flat rate in this ordinance. And that seems inconsistent with what you just presented.
Okay, we can, we can take a look at it after today and clear that up, if it looks that way.
Okay.
It's meant to be the lower, sixty-five percent of the lower one for all, all areas, so we'll fix that.
That's definitely not what's in here today. And, and so as you spoke, how, kind of.
It should be the lower of the numbers that there's two of there.
Okay, fair enough. And then there's this table C, the, the love met table.
Yes.
And I guess my question is, is that a policy table that can be altered by counsel? Or is it a data table that has to come from engineering?
It's a great question. Short answer is it is a table that is needed to implement the fee. Some of the rows of that table were used in the math to get here based on converting growth to a, a number of units of growth based on lane use types. So if the table's changed, it can impact the math and have to redo the calculation to get to a maximum. That, that's the, that's the shortest answer I can give to that. From a policy standpoint, there is some level of discretion of if you didn't want to use the manual I mentioned earlier, ITE, and come up with some alternative method of computing trip generation or an alternative way to generate trip length, we could look at different ones. But it would need to be based off of something that would be engineering sound.
I think what I'm hearing is that we shouldn't change the table.
You can, but yeah, it would, it would require a pretty robust effort to rebuild it with some other basis.
Okay, got it. You know, I think I have like discussion questions, but not so much questions for him, so I'll cede the floor for now.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have some questions that might involve both you and the city manager on kind of practical things regarding the fees and homeowners. Well, one, I would like clarity on the six-mile radius because the whole purpose of splitting it into an area A and area B is because of state law. This, the state law just required to be split in that A and B, but you can charge either a flat rate or separate rate? Or does each area have to have its own rate per the state law?
Per the law, you can charge however you would like on collections. This was just the schema that the committee came up with or decided on. We, we presented options to do variable versus a flat rate across the city, which we can work out and fix that in the ordinance, so it's flat across the city. But the six miles, you can split it up into even more areas if you want. From an implementation standpoint, it's been found simpler and more effective to have as few areas as possible. The reason for that, of having as few areas as possible is over time, if you were to collect money, the smaller the areas are, the smaller that collection would be, and it has to be spent in that same area. So if you start cutting it up into smaller pieces, the collections don't build into meaningful amounts to do projects when you have it like that. The other reason for the Colorado River as a split is we generally try to set it up where there's a, a natural or a man-made barrier to travel that's logical, where the travel stays in one area or the other from a trip's perspective to kind of stay with that intent of six miles.
And in comparison, the, the cities that you compared us to, are they split or?
They're all split.
They're all split?
Yeah, there's just a few cities in Texas that have one, and it's because they're smaller than y'all.
Um, what, what cities then?
Fate, Texas, they're up in the north. They're, they're small enough to be one service area. Austin, for example, has seventeen areas. Fort Worth has twenty-six or twenty-seven, excuse me. So the larger the city limits, the more.
Flat rate though, or, or a split rate?
Uh, it's about a fifty-fifty mix. So how, it really honestly is a split of policy decision of flat versus, versus a variable rate.
So on paper, as state law, we have to have area A, area B, but we, we can charge one rate.
Sure.
So a couple of other things, and so I would like, I'll back up to affordable housing. So there was a lot of discussion about affordable housing. It always comes up, affordable housing always comes up. And the reality, from what I can tell, is this actually has a negative impact on affordable housing because if the developments are having to pay more in impact fees, then that typically then rolls off to the rental cost or the home purchase cost. So when we talk about affordable housing, it's a touchy subject for me because the way that it's being used is not affordable housing for the average person. So when we set our rates, I need, I want everyone to keep that in mind. It's gonna, it's gonna impact the ability of people to afford an already high cost of living to live in Bastrop. So are we wanting to price people out of Bastrop? Or are we only wanting to, dare I say the word, gentrify Bastrop with the rate that we set? I do believe, I do, I, I'm not against the impact fee or setting an impact fee. I'm for setting an impact fee. I just want us to be very conscientious about what fee we set and how that's going to impact residents. And one of the things that I, I would like Sylvia, our city manager, you to speak to is the ADU piece of it. Because I have a, I know that the commission had opted for no exemptions, and I, I don't think that that's the best route to go. I am also, I know the city manager favors a flat rate. I trust our. I trust our city manager. If she thinks that's the best way to go, I'm good with that. My concern is with the A and B. Because the east, there ain't much more room for us to go east. It's going to be a lot less development happening east versus west. And where I have an issue or concern is if I, as a homeowner, want to build an ADU for my elderly mom, who I'm moving from Mississippi because she can't live on her own anymore. She's not driving. She's not adding anything to the streets of Bastrop, and she's living on the east side. So I'm having to pay five thousand dollars to add an ADU for my elderly mom, which is not even going to pay for my streets. It's going to pay for other streets that my elderly mom will never drive on, and I may never drive on for that matter. And that neighbor, I might not know anybody in that neighborhood. I don't have any use to go in that neighborhood. But I'm having to pay a five thousand dollar fee for that. My neighbor has ten people living with him, generating way more traffic than my elderly mom, who's going to generate no traffic. So I think you get my point here. I don't understand where the impact fee for new development is now negatively impacting a homeowner who's already established, and our code already says they can have, what, two to three ADUs or something like that? So can we speak to that?
So I believe that's why the Planning Commission chose fifty-two oh four, which is the lower number, and then sixty-five percent of that, which is how you get to the thirty-five. No, you were on the right. You were on the right chart. Yep. So, so if you go to area A, you see it was eighty-six hundred dollars. And then area B is fifty-two hundred dollars, and then they chose the lower one and a percentage of the lower one. That's how we got to the thirty-five hundred number. And it's not that the east side is undevelopable. It's not as infrastructure-rich. Although that has a greater proportion within the city limits. If we really took a granular look at this, I have a greater potential to collect there because they're already inside my city limits, whereas on the west side, I'm having to work through development agreements. And Colin, if you'll bring up that map. Because most of the west side here really, truly is built out. Everything that we're working on toward Colin will get into where my pointer is right now. Essentially centered on Pearl River. Yeah, it'll take a while. That's good. So today, we have the potential for, I believe it's six hundred units at Reed Ranch. That's in the city limit. If you do six hundred times two thousand, then you're going to get one point two million or so, and that's for Reed Ranch. That would contribute toward Lakey. I would venture to tell you Burleson East is going to be about one and a half times that amount. And I can tell you Pearl River would have had substantial. Those are cool. They're in our city limits. What isn't cool is we just did Valverde, Phase One. That's about three hundred and fifty units. Three hundred and fifty units times thirty-five hundred, and you get that number. We just annexed this L piece, but this L piece has a larger tract under it that is not annexed. This is twenty-five hundred LUEs that just came in on Thursday. Right below that is eleven hundred LUEs. Over to the right of that is eight hundred LUEs. All of those are outside of our city limits. And so I'm sweating on, not only are these, this one won't create a mud because it is so accessible to our utilities. That one will be fairly easy to reach. But like Adelton, for example, West Bastrop Village, they have a municipal utility district, which won't let them annex until after that debt is paid off. The same thing for the Colony. The newer sections for the Colony, we're negotiating better. They'll tie on. But they're outside of the city limits. So while this area has the greatest amount of growth, it's also going to be harder to collect because we've got to negotiate it out. Whereas this side of the world, it might not be as infrastructure-rich, but we're getting there. There's a development that's proposed behind the Buckeyes that's eight hundred LUEs. No way to stop it. It's just, and for me, the flat rate is better across the city because it is easier for staff to calculate. It's much easier for finance and the planning department staff to calculate. The west side, which is where all of our growth is occurring, is, it's a toughie. It's a toughie. I, and to the point about the single-family ADU for your mother on the, on the east side. Yes, your mother may not generate traffic, which goes to Lyle's point. Was this a suburban area or a rural area? Because if it's a rural area, they are going to generate the traffic. It's the caregiver, the delivery of prescriptions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If we were a more urban area, perhaps there wouldn't be as much of an impact because there's already a lot of traffic going through there, and you have pedestrians, et cetera, et cetera. They tell, you know, this started the force of the... We did take into account the rule-ness of an area, but I mean, from my standpoint, and I know it goes against some of the council members, is we have those unintended consequences to our residents, and I would not be opposed to exempting one ADU. And that is if my kid has to come live with me, if my, if my mom has to live with me, not be... And, and my kid's going to move on. My grandma or my mom are going to pass on, and those are going to become rental units, and they are going to generate traffic. I think we did the same thing with the B three code in the densities that we allowed. We did the very same thing. We're now trying to play catch-up.
Right.
And I don't think the B three code took any of this into consideration. As I told you guys before, whoever wrote the B three code sure as hell never did a street maintenance budget.
Oh, no. So one exemption, exemption for one ADU, eighteen-month consideration for a grace period. What other exemptions would there possibly, should we, should we consider? If any?
So the affordable housing is kind of already taken care of, and there is some language about senior housing. So that may, we just need to kind of shift that definition. Mayor Protem Kirkland raised the definition in there of what is considered new development. And new development is anything that puts a car on the road. So if you are enclosing your garage to add a thousand-foot game room, you're going to have more people in that space, right? But I'm, I'm struggling with the parity of, as we discussed today, a family of six versus a family of two. And, you know, where does that happen? And what does our demographic really look like? So we don't have those unintended consequences.
And how do we revengage that? Like, how do you know that there's not twenty people living in that one house generating? You don't.
I don't.
But I'm going to be paying five thousand dollars to add one ADU for one person. You know what I mean? I feel like there's, we, I feel like there should be an exemption because everybody's not the same. There's exceptions to the rule, and I don't think anyone should feel like they're being punished to take care of roads, right? So I had another question. We talked about development.
Do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I was just saying, I have a couple of other exemptions I can share from other cities.
Oh, right.
There is one, several of them are in Austin. As you might imagine, they have complex ordinance. But they did a couple of other exemptions. One was for their definition of affordable housing. They have a smart housing program. Effectively, if you provide units that are eighty percent of the median gross income, those are basically get a reduction to zero for the fee to provide units that would be more affordable than the median income. So that's one policy that they put in. City of Austin also has a provision to set the fees to zero dollars on the east side of town, where they had for specific land uses, one of those was grocery stores because they have food deserts that lack access to healthy food sources. They also did that for banking institutions because they felt there were a lot of predatory lending-type land uses on the east side and wanted to encourage better loan services on the east side. Other folks have looked at doing reductions for other types of land use or varying the rates for different types of units as opposed to it being just a straight line. So while the base math and the conversion table is based off of that, you could pull different levers with the policy and change the rate for an apartment versus a house. Georgetown did that. They separated the rates for single-family versus other multifamily-type units. They actually charged more per unit for the higher density because they didn't want the higher-density units in that particular community. So there's ways to do this. Like, for example, if you said we really want office space for some reason, you could set the rates lower for that or higher. Southlake, they didn't want fast-food restaurants in the metroplex, so they set those at the maximum rate while lower rates for other types of food. So the possibilities are truly endless with this, but those are some examples of other policies or exemptions.
And wouldn't there be a different rate if I'm, if I'm building ground up a clothing store somewhere near Tahitian in the city limits? Are we saying with a flat rate, I would pay the same rate as a commercial development?
No, so the, the conversion chart would have that big table, the land use vehicle mileage of the city has a bunch of land uses. And the most appropriate land use, if there was a similar land use to that, yes, you would pay the same for another clothing store on the west side of town or other places in the city with a, with a flat rate implemented. But it would not be the same as a coffee shop, car dealership. No, no, there, yeah, there's endless land uses for that.
Okay. So with the county, with the county situation, our fourteen forty-five doesn't help us out because the reality is, yeah, they're going to be living outside of our city limits, but they're, they're going to be coming in town to grocery shop, shop, hang out, use whatever. So is there some type of maybe use tax? Have we thought about a use tax, and not only just for like people that live outside of our city limits, but Amazon and UPS and all of the other traffic that more people bring? Some type of use tax plus an impact fee?
No, no.
It just hasn't been discussed, but it's something we could consider. It's just never been...
I'm not sure that you can do a use. I'm not, I'm not sure you can do a...
Yeah.
It's doable. I read about it. But I know we don't have any consideration for it now. I just wondered. So that's kind of where I stand on this. The ADUs consideration, stop calling affordable housing affordable housing if it's not affordable housing, and think about the impact that this actually is going to have on the cost to live in Bastrop. Because we're going to reevaluate it, whatever five years we said, every five years it's going to go up. And every five years, it's going to make it harder for people to live in Bastrop, which is where I think the exemptions are, are very, very important. And then I'm hoping somewhere down the line, legislation allows us to consider the fact that people are coming here and they're using it, and we're not getting an impact fee for that traffic.
Hence, remember October second, I said we need to think about annexation when we write our development agreements at the time of agreement, not at a time later. A lot of what has come into us has muds, municipal utility districts. So you can't annex those until the debt is paid for. But we left a lot of things on the table with some of those agreements, and now we're going to be paying the consequence for that for the next twenty years.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. So I was at the planning zoning meeting. I saw your presentation sitting out. And the one thing that I wasn't clear on and that you just said a little while ago was on the sixty-five percent. And I do understand why they wanted one percent because it gets pretty confusing on the A and B. But on the maximum percentage chart, if you would bring that up, you said that they chose to do sixty-five percent of the B, which is the low number.
Correct.
I was assuming it was sixty-five percent of the average of A and B. But it's, so is that ever done on the average?
Yeah, we could, I mean, the, again, the possibilities are endless for what collection rate y'all want to set. This was just a starting point for this group. So yes, we could set sixty-five percent of the average of those two if we wanted to, or, or any other number for that matter.
Because if it's sixty-five percent of just the B, it's thirty-three eighty-two, but it's sixty-five percent of the average is forty-five hundred.
I think, I know what you're talking about now, Councilmember Meyer, is I think sixty-five percent was represented as approximately the average of fifty percent of each.
Fifty percent of each? Okay.
Correct. So it falls, it falls around that point.
So I understood you said it was sixty-five percent of B. So I'm mistaken in that?
It is sixty-five percent of B. That's what those numbers represent.
But it would equal to fifty percent?
If you were to have, yeah, if you're averaging the fifty percent of max for A and B, it's roughly sixty-five percent of B.
Okay.
That's, that's how that should be.
Yeah, because it's about eleven hundred dollars difference. So I was kind of, that's what my question was.
So instead of twenty-six hundred and two, if you go with the average of A and B, it's roughly the thirty-five eighty-four, which is sixty-five percent.
Okay, thank you.
That's how we got there. Thank you. Good question.
Councilmember Plunkett.
All right. In the, I'm trying to understand how this gets phased in. And I'm not super clear on the, the moratorium, the...
Sure.
And also, on our development agreements, when they pay a traffic impact fee, is that going to be in lieu of this? Obviously, for the ones that we, that are going to come in ahead of the deadline, then they would be, right? Okay.
Let the negotiations begin.
Right. So, okay, so, so we would, in a development agreement, we would have the power to exempt them from anything because they would pay in lieu of, right? They would pay.
That too, but I think what, I think what some folks were thinking in the beginning is, oh, you're going to give right-of-way. You don't have to pay. No.
Right. Yeah, depending, you may.
I need your land to build the road, and you've got to pay half of the road. So...
I will say, one community, Georgetown, actually specified in their ordinance. They said that you would be exempt if you had a development agreement with transportation improvements defined. So they actually codified it in the ordinance.
That was Georgetown's. That was Georgetown's.
I just wanted to make it abundantly clear. You can do a development agreement as long as it defines transportation improvement requirements for your development and not do this.
Yeah, because I mean, I can see situations where a, an artery that goes through a piece of property that would be an onsite improvement would have a tremendous positive impact on the rest of the city. I can also see a situation where you could build out everything on your, on your property and it not do a thing for the rest of the, and not give any connectivity, not give, you know. And then, but your, you know, your residents, your, you know, retail customers or whatever are not going to confine themselves to your piece of property. So it would have a negative impact on the rest of it. So I can see both ways. I could see how a, an artery could be valuable enough that if they were to build it at the size that it needed to be built, that you're just like, hey, we're good on traffic impact because you just, you know, saved our bacon for, you know, some other deal.
Yeah, especially for those development agreements, as I showed you on the map, especially as we move forward, those development agreements along seventy-one, along the southern side of seventy-one and along three oh four, that we need participation not only from TechStop, but from the county, the city, and then the developer, understanding what our impact is totality and being able to work those things in the development agreement. Right now, for example, at Reed Ranch, we got all of the right-of-way that we needed for Lakey, but that's all we got. It has a value. It absolutely has a value to the developer. What this would do at a later point is, is that right-of-way and half-road construction.
Right. Yeah, and when we start building bridges across the river and things like that, I mean, those are going to be huge projects that are going to be, you know, that are going to have, you know, impacts, you know, far and wide. And I'm just trying to understand how those, you know, get calculated in. And also, on the A versus B, I understand the flat rate would be much simpler to administer. Is the, but obviously, the, the need on the west side is much greater than that on the east as far as thoroughfares and things like that. I just, I don't want to hamstring us, you know, to the point where we can't afford the stuff on the west because what we collected on the east has to stay in the east, and we don't have, you know, important projects to do. You know, so if we, you know, I think it, since it's only two, I think it would be worth it if, you know, if we, if the analysis finds that, that we're going to not have, not collect enough money on the west to afford the projects on the west. Because what this, this whole thing is about not saddling future residents with, you know, the cost of development. It's about trying to spread that out in a more equitable way. And I just want to make sure we're given that proper consideration.
Can I explain the phasing-in question as well that you have?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah, so the phased-in approach from other cities, so... Okay, yeah, so the phased in approach from other cities, so what that is, is the phases are different percentages, dollar amounts, uh, that get implemented over a year, two-year type of spacing. So I'll use Round Rock as the example, they, they chose to do a three phased phase in. So what they did is their policy in 2019, they were the first one in the Austin area to adopt, um, and they adopted it in March of 19, they said, we're not going to collect any fees until January 1st of 2020. Um, and so that was their first phase, they had a rate scheduled for that. So as long as your, uh, if you, there was no really incentive to plat sooner up through that point, they had a phase two date starting in January 1st, 2022. And that phase two was affecting plats after January 1st, 2022. So as long as you didn't do a replat or plat your property, you would always be locked into those phase one collection rates and you wouldn't pay anything until 2020. The third phase, which goes into effect in this coming January, also affects new plats. So the phasing is based on plat date, but the collection occurs at building permit. So unless, unless you replat, you're going to lock in a rate at one of those phases up until that time. So that's, that's how that works.
Okay, and the 12-month mandatory is from the plat date or from, or the permit, from the plat date to the permit date or from?
The 12 months is from the effective date of the ordinance. You, you, the, the very baseline is you cannot collect a fee if they have a final plat prior to the effective date of the ordinance. That is all the state law says. A lot of cities though, to make things simpler for themselves, said, we'll just not collect on anybody even if they happen to plat after this goes effective and pull a building permit, which is, uh, usually for smaller developments, the big ones take a little bit longer to get to that point to per previous conversation, so. The 12 months was, hey, let's just give it a year. At that point, anybody that, building permits anyways will still be at that, that rate.
So the idea is that our council can't come in and say, oh, hey, this development just got platted with, you know, 5,000 units, let's go, uh, put in an impact fee for, it's to keep them from doing that.
Correct.
Okay, so anything that's not platted is not included in the, in the 12-month, or, or would we then say, okay, if you?
You could, that's what the committee's recommendation was, is to extend that coverage to anybody who's not platted. Give them time to plat and pull a building permit and that.
If they could.
Right, and so there's other cities that had it, like the 21 months for Round Rock, that was just, hey, it doesn't matter your plat status, we won't collect on you for 21 months, but once the 21 months is up, everybody, doesn't matter if you platted or not, you're going to be subject to this.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Yep.
So Adelton, for example, let, uh, not Adelton, Valverde, let, let's take that one into account, for example. So it has a preliminary, has a concept plan, we call it a neighborhood regulating plan or whatever heck language we now decided to call it. They're in, you just annexed phase one, phase one and phase two. They're going through preliminary plats, you're going to see that here rather quickly. Their PIPA should be on council probably first meeting in October, that's 350 units. Those 350 wouldn't be subject to this. Valverde phase is three and on, depending on when they come online, could be subject to any one of these things that you guys decide to give it. So it's really critical for us to consider what is in the pipeline right now. Valverde, Pearl River, um, the Lover's Lane, 25 acres. Everything at Hunter's Crossing, everything at 304, and, and how are we going to, um, what are those impacts going to be? And I, for the next meeting, for our next discussion of this, I'd like to bring you a, um, this is what that impact would be along any one of these scenarios.
Can I make one clarified point?
Sure.
Even if you're platted right now, this could still impact you a building permit. Just want to be clear about that.
Even if they're platted now?
Correct.
Unless council decides to exempt.
Correct. Yeah, so the way the state law is written is because it's a fee, even with plat dates and grandfathering other clauses in the state law, because it's a fee, those can go into effect anytime. So someone who is already entitled in theory that has six, seven, eight, nine phases left, those backend phases could pay this, that, want to be clear about that for everybody. Unless you exempt it or do something different.
Yeah.
Clear. Mayor Protim Kirkland.
So something that Councilperson Plunkett said that found thought provoking had to do with, um, you know, the overall purpose of this is for development to pay for itself. It's to make sure that the development projects are, that, that may cause a road to need to be built, that it's, uh, reducing the amount that existing residents need to pay for that road because that development is helping to provide funds for it. So, um, I know that behind the presentation and even behind the ordinance is some engineering models. And I, in order to set a rate and, and kind of be aware of how much development is paying for itself, I guess I have a question, which was, what was the total modeled amount of road improvements that were necessary? A, and then B, um, what is the, um, amount that would come from this over, say, 10 years in, in dollars?
That's a great question, um, so the, the total amount of this, uh, need was that full, I pulled the pie chart back up because it helps explain it.
Right, exactly.
It's about $115 million in projects.
One, five, zero?
115, one, one, five.
One, one, five, okay.
Between A and B. So when you take out everything else, you're sitting around 60 million that you could in theory collect, that would be if you charged the maximum in both areas, is what you're sitting at, you're sitting around roughly 50%. If you're charging 65% of the maximum in B, you're getting a little bit more than half in B and a little bit less than half in A. So you're sitting in that 25-ish million range, I'll get a specific number when we come back on the second reading for that. I don't want to give you a finite number at this minute, we can calculate that for you, um, and, and talk through that some more. But it's, it's somewhere less than, um, somewhere less than 20 to 25% of the, um, total impact.
Yeah, um, as we pursue an election to convert, it's a slightly different topic, but it comes back real quick. Uh, as we pursue an election to convert a portion of the EDC tax collection into road maintenance, that generates, um, that will, would, would be, if that passes, uh, 3.3 million dollars a year. That is currently going into a piggy bank and often used for developing roads.
Correct.
And so in my mind, I want to make sure that we are at least covering that for new roads to be developed. That we haven't lost capacity to build new roads through the, the, the two steps that we take to create road maintenance fund, A, and B, to create an impact fee. I want us to be, you know, more or less even. And, and that would indicate, or that would probably indicate that the 65% of the lower amount might be too low to recover the tax collection that, for, for, for building new roads.
Yeah, 3.3 million, yeah, you'd most likely be under that with this per current population.
Sure, so I'm going to use Valverde for example.
Yeah.
175 in phase one, Colin, will you bring up that map, I'm sorry?
So, well, it's going to time me out. Okay, so Valverde is here, here's the colony, right, here's Valverde, here is, um, section one and section two, it's got some commercial and here is residential. 175 and 175, that's 350 units, times 584, that's 1.2 and a half million dollars. The construction of Blakey, we have given, um, estimates that we have, um, probably 4.7 million, Fabiola? 3.5 plus 4.7 million, uh, of Blakey, that's road utilities, et cetera, et cetera. So just this one phase would pay for their proportional share. I'm sorry, did I do that every time I touch?
No, our, our displays went up.
Oh, okay. So as we talk about the impact and the proportional share to residents, that is understanding that the developers are still building the interior roads to this. They're, they're still having to give us a bond and warranty that the interior neighborhood roads are going to be good. What they're paying for is those bigger collector roads, which you are absolutely right, we have historically been, um, getting from the EDC to the tune of about $2 million a year.
So I, I guess, uh, I, I would like to see, you know, the, the numbers so that we can make sure that we're setting the rate at a level that is appropriate to recoup the tax collection that we're shifting to road maintenance. And, and I think that, that it's probably a consideration that, I mean, it wasn't in our packet, I wasn't even thinking about it when I sat down here, so probably not conceived of when even the impact fee group met, so I'd at least like to factor that in.
And then what we can do, I've done this before with the, uh, councils, I can have the projections set up, but we can, if we wanted to live, we can try to work with technology and play with that.
We've got that, we'll meet at that.
We can mess with the numbers and see how that impacts the revenues live.
So at, at a maximum for Valverde, at 350 units, at the 8644, um, rate, which is the maximum for area A, that's a, a little under 3.1 million dollars at the maximum rate. At the 65% of the lowest rate, it's that 1.25. And at, um, at the 5204, let's say it was area B, that's 1.8 million.
So, yeah, just for the.
Yeah.
Next discussion, see what the.
Sure, because.
Model totals look like.
Yeah, it's Blakey, it's Agnes.
South Street.
Yes, it's South Street, it's Lover's Lane.
You know, it's the.
No, for sure, for sure.
Yep. Councilmember Crouch.
That was actually one of my, one of my questions was if we could see numbers on a map, on, on the other maps, the A and B maps, maybe you can, um, show a little blip, like in, uh, the old part of town, how much it's going to cost, just so we can see in a map. Per area, what, what the impact fee is going to be on that. So I think the numbers now to go along with all the other facts and information that you've got is going to, uh, help us make a determination as to the percentage rate. Because we need to make sure we're paying for everything and not leave something.
Yeah, it's like. Share the total cost in each one and what that represents next time.
Yeah, that, that would be very, very helpful. And then the phasing two, um. There was, there was, uh, an example given to us of, of, of the phasing of the tax for a three-year period. Can you, uh, explain what the benefit or not benefit is of that? Because as we're doing the, uh, the paving plan and for the next indefinitely, uh, number of years, um, we're not going to do it all at one time. It's all going to be done, we're going to have a little bit, we're going to spend each year for that. So if we phase these costs in to the taxpayer. Money in one lump sum at the beginning, it can just be one year, two years, three years, and, because that's how we're going to spend it as well, so.
Yeah, so, um, a couple of things on that, um, so you said benefits and not benefits of the phased in approach. So, uh, I think generally speaking, the philosophy. That's kind of the two prongs of that. So, um, practically speaking, what that means is if you're already in the development process and you can't plat before the new year grace period or before a new rate went into effect for the second phase, you would have enough time to do so and get your building permits, or sorry, get your plat done and then do that. Um, I think what is interesting about the phased in rates or even the, the not benefit of that is from a city standpoint, um, if you're wanting to get to a number and it took, takes five years, like it's done Round Rock, and there was a three phase over five years, actually. Anybody who came in and platted before that is getting a reduced rate, even if their building permits are 15 years from now and they don't have a replat. So I think that might be one of the things that's a little bit different on the phasing in is, um, because it's tied to plat date, if you have enough time to get your plat in, that's kind of what some of these other cities were thinking of, is, is that 18 months, is it two years, so let those folks finish plating? And then after that, let's just stick with a singular rate, that's why the benefits for other cities said is, we've done the additional grace period to get your, your locking, your rate in. And then after that time, we've given them the grace period and if we decide as a council to change it or phase it up, we can do that based on what we're seeing in terms of collections and other market conditions.
Okay.
One of.
That's, that's what I've seen from the two different sides of the argument.
Okay. That, that was it.
One of the, one of the super, super, super critical points I want council to remember is that roads are paid out of the general fund. Or they're paid out of, um, incentives, but mostly debt. If we went with the 3594 amount, it's about, and I just divided it over a 30-year mortgage, it's about $120. This past year, our, or this year, as you guys are going to adopt, our, um, tax rate, even though the rate went down, valuations went up, it was a 1.6%. That had an average of $128 annually per home. So it's almost a, um, it's almost a pick your poison, right? We're having, there's more pressure on the general fund, there's more pressure to do things. Do we, do we place it on the residents who are having the impact or do we continue to spread it among everybody who's sort of been here and it's getting harder and harder to live here? That's always cognizant in my mind because we do have our infrastructure in our urban core, in our core, um, that is failing, that we have to address. And that's why we're looking so seriously at roads and that's, you know, a 70 to 100 million dollar bill. But, you know, from a bigger picture perspective is, as we do expect development to pay its own way, to release that pressure on the existing residents.
Councilmember Crouch, you got it. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor, um, my questions are answered for the most part, I do have, because I was, I was wanting the numbers too, so that's been talked about and we're going to have that in our next meeting. I did want to clarify, what's the like rate of return on this, um, for the city? Well, I mean, we're charging an impact fee of what we potentially think it's going to do to our roads and our infrastructure. How long will it take us, like, is this an annual type thing that we should receive some revenue back from, what's the time period for rate of return?
So, uh, once the grace period's over, the collections would begin day one when that's over, uh, for building permits. So whatever your annual building permit load would be at that time for a year, it's that amount of permits that are done based on the land use with that big chart, the land use vehicle molecule, that's a love met, it's a fancy word for it. It would just be whatever that produces, and we can show that, I'll show that in a chart when I come back, correct? Of what that would look like, but basically however long the grace period lasts, there's zero collections and then when that stops, you start collecting that day one of that year. So it's just, it's based on the amount of growth, which we're all crystal balling to some extent, right? 10 years is really hard to predict, I'll, I'll say that and be honest, you know, that's, that's our best, best guess on these revenue projections. One important note that you triggered in my mind to make, make note of too is, um, a lot of the most successful programs from an impact fee standpoint is less about revenue collection and more about infrastructure building. Um, I should have said that on the front end, I want to make sure to be clear about that is, um, some programs, I may say a number when I come back next time, but some of that might be offset by people building the arterials, the artery roads that are in the plan. So if someone builds one of these projects that's in that cost, the numerator, to get the fee, they can do that instead of paying a check to the city to that, you go build it for me. And that usually does have a lot of dividends for the city because now you're not having to take the money and go spend it to build it, hire someone to design it, construct it, inspect it.
They can build it a lot cheaper is what he's saying.
Yes, yes, they can.
A lot faster and a lot cheaper.
They can build it faster, cheaper and it's on the front end as opposed to getting a check and figuring it out. Now, if you want the flexibility to decide what you want to build, you have a higher priority and you want to collect that, sometimes that's also helpful. If there's a high priority project that there's nobody that's going to develop next to it, it's just an old road like 95 that, that needs improving, something like that.
So are, tonight, what's expected of us, are we, are we just accepting the presentation or the pop, the?
You open the public hearing, you'll take some public comments on it, you'll have consideration of the ordinance with all of your amended changes, but you're not taking any action. We will bring all of those back, um, at the next reading. But, um, if you heard Jake earlier, don't close the public hearing because you have to take action within 30 days of that. So if we're not ready and we've still got some machinations to go through.
And are, are we meeting on the 26th or not?
We are meeting on the 26th. We're meeting on the 26th and the 29th.
Okay, got it.
I'm sorry, your calendar is full through January.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments, questions? I have a question for Colin, Colin, we're going to be able to get something on our screens here, we're all. But we are ready to connect according to what I'm reading here, so. All right, councilor, there's no other questions, we're going to open a public hearing, I'm hoping to get the screen that he had put up about closing the public hearing.
You can close the map, Colin, if that's any help, I know that takes up a lot of bandwidth.
There we go. There you go, thank you, right there. We will now open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody who wishes to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
As stated earlier, we will not be closing the public hearing until we're ready to adopt the ordinance, which will be no earlier than the 26th. So the public hearing and the opportunity for public comment remains open until at least then. With that being said, do I have a motion?
A motion that we table this ordinance to the next meeting for further discussion.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland to table this until further discussion.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. This item is tabled until next time. We will move to item 9B. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-37, Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Coda Ordinance as Appendix A, Fee Schedule, Article A, 13.02.004, Water Service Charge, as attached in Exhibit A, Providing for Findings of Fact, Enactment, Repealer, Severability, Providing for an Effective Date, Codification, Proper Notice and Meeting, and move to include on October 12th, that should be October 10th, am I correct? Madam City Manager? October 10th, 2023 Agenda for a Second Reading. Ms. Allen?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. New Gen Strategies and Solutions was contracted to perform a water and wastewater study in 2018, as well as wholesales rate study in 2022. They were contracted to evaluate revenue requirements forecasted over the next five years, as well as our ordinance and billing methodologies. The water rate study recommended that the city use a phase-in approach to increase the demand charge by meter size for water meters to reflect the American Water Works Association meter equivalency standards. This step increase is projected to continue through FY 2025. This image is actually the same image that has been used since the implementation of the five-year step plan. I would like to point out where it says current rate. That was actually FY 21 rates. FY 23 would reflect what is actually current rates. The FY 24 budget included the assumption that the water base rate would increase $5 for quarter meter and equivalent charges to other meters. Staff recommends the approval of this ordinance.
Council, any questions for Ms. Allen or for our City Manager relative to this item? Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, I just have a question, because I feel like we talk about this every year. So every year, we have to reapprove the new rates?
Yes, ma'am.
For our order, charter, or whatever. Okay, I just want to be sure of some, I feel like we've already said we're going to do this. Why are we?
We've already said we're going to do it. But this is, this is one of those things of significant public importance.
Okay.
And it goes to our debt, like our debt-to-income ratio, so.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve, if there are no questions.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second with Councilmember Crouch. Any further discussion? Council, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yeah. As Councilperson Lee pointed out, this does come to us periodically, and I'm curious if, instead of increasing the base rate, if we can increase the usage rate and not increase the base rate and collect the same amount of dollars.
Potentially, we'd have to work out the mathematical calculation to that. The only thing about that is when we have periods of fluctuation and drought, the debt payment is still due and revenue may drop.
Explain that again.
So.
Under drought?
Sure.
I've never looked at the correlation between drought and water usage.
Sure.
I didn't.
So when we go to, for example, when we.
Got it, stage restrictions.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Correct.
The involuntary kinds, okay.
Correct.
Yes, of course.
Need consistency.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Crouch?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a motion by Councilmember Lee, a second by Councilmember Crouch, seeing no further discussion. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move to item 9C. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-33 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Budget for Fiscal Year 2023, 2024, October 1, 2023, through September 30, 2024, Attachments Exhibit A, Making Certain Appropriations, Providing the Expenditures for Said Fiscal Year Be Made in accordance with Said Budget, Updating the Master Fee Schedule, Providing the Distribution, Severability, Repealer, and Effective Date, and Proper Notice of Meeting. Madam City Manager?
It's time to approve the budget. With the changes that were requested over the previous discussion, and that is community to support funding increased, $25,000 for the 1099, the police, and then also the Visit Bastrop proposed changes. Ms. Allen?
These past few slides, as a second reading, what y'all had previously received on September the 12th, council did agree to amend the Visit Bastrop contract by reducing it 15% as well as increasing the community assets by 15%. That would make the Visit Bastrop projected revenue 1.2 million, and we give some of the changes to each one of the individual assets.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I want to, I think we missed a zero there, Laura, on the 1.1290. That is a 35% projection. What we had in the contract or what was approved previously was about 1.4. So again, this is just based on projections. What we have in the contract was a 35% and then a ceiling of 1.4.
And y'all, the 50% increase recommended by Councilmember Myers on page 127 of our packet, it shows the dollar change as well as if the final appropriation.
Correct.
Budgeted amount, I should say. So any questions for our City Manager or Ms. Allen? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
I have a second with Councilmember Plunkett. Either, any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Manager?
Open it for public comment.
I did not have that on my packet, but I can certainly do so.
Please.
Second reading?
On 9C, we're going to open the budget consideration for public comment. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody who wishes to speak on this item?
No, Mayor.
I'm glad I opened a public comment, because now I can close.
My apologies, I saw guests in the audience, I thought they were here to speak.
Now can close a public comment? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Congratulations, council. We have a budget for FY 24.
Woo!
That's a whole nother discussion, sir. It's a whole nother discussion.
I'll just remind the council, we will, there's a couple of things I told you were not included in this budget as part of the presentation, that's the quiet zone and the hotel study. As opposed to amending this budget, because this has been a painful process in the last couple of weeks, we will bring you an amendment from unappropriated revenues in this fiscal at a future date, which might be as soon as October.
Will it be sticker shock?
No.
Good.
No, but I believe the council will also have an opportunity. You know, we talked about having 1.3 million above reserve. The council will also have an opportunity to determine if there's anything that you want to appropriate to parks and open space or things like that.
I like that. Moving on to item 9D. Consider action to approve Resolution R, or number R-2023-127, Ratifying the Adoption of Fiscal Year 2023, 2024 Budget, Will Require Raising More Revenue from Property Taxes Than in the Previous Year. Ms. Allen or Madam City Manager?
The next two items are required by state law, and state law does require separate and additional votes to ratify a vote that approves a budget if the budget will raise more revenue from ad valorem taxes than the prior year.
Thank you, thank you. Hold on a second, make sure we read it just exactly as it's written, please.
I move to ratify the vote just taken to approve the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget, which will raise more revenues from ad valorem taxes than the previous fiscal year.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that to Councilmember Crouch. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland? Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. And to answer your question, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
There it is.
Yep. Moving on to item 9E. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-34 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Adopting Tax Role, Adopting Tax Rate, and Leaving Ad Valorem Taxes for Fiscal Year 2023, 2024, to Provide Revenue for the Payment of Budgeted Municipal Expenditures, Providing for Tax Assessment, Records, Severability, and Effective Date, and Proper Notice and Meeting. Again, Ms. Allen?
This is another one of those state laws that require council to adopt a budget before adapting the tax rate. This is a second reading of this item, there is no change from the first reading, it's just the way it falls, that it could not be on consent.
Thank you so much, Ms. Allen. Any questions for Ms. Allen before I ask for a motion on this? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Yes, I'm going to redeem myself, but I don't see it on the screen so that I can read it, word for word.
There you go.
There you go. Ask and you shall receive.
That's not the motion.
No.
Oh, yes, that was.
Nope.
I moved.
Going way back, I'm going back.
There it is. I wrote it down, but I want to read it on the screen. I wrote it down. It's not on the screen. I moved that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.4994 per 100 valuation, which is effectively a 1.6% increase in the tax rate.
I have a well-read motion from Councilmember Lee. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second with Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will read the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. I think that this item is going to generate quite a robust discussion when we start talking about next year's budget or the following year, 2025 budget. I appreciate.
Which we will start in January, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's like, can we at least wait a week or two?
Starting budget workshops already.
We need to start it quickly. We will move on to item 9F. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-31 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Amending the Bastrop Coda Ordinance as Chapter 14, the Bastrop Building Block B3 Technical Manual, Article 4.1, Plat Submission, and Providing for Findings of Fact, Repealer, Severability, Codification, Effective Date, Proper Notice and Meeting. Madam City Manager?
Mayor and council, this is a repeat of the ordinance you heard, probably could have been heard on consent. This is requiring a GIS shapefile for four lots or less, or, I'm sorry, a GIS shapefile for anything four lots or more, in order to give appropriate assistance to the staff for dropping things into the development area that can properly inform the residents and the council for decision-making.
Has everybody got that? Any questions for the City Manager?
I do have one.
Councilmember Lee?
What if not everybody has the ability to do that?
So surveyors prepare plat, surveyors and engineers prepare plat. It's a pretty standard.
It is standard, okay.
I had the, I've worked with this data file format recently, and there was a learning curve associated with it that I didn't want to put upon small developments, which is why I requested the exemption for plat smaller than four units. So anything that's bigger than that, we're kind of presuming that they have the kinds of professionals available that are going to have the knowledge on how to do that. So motion to approve.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Second.
Do I have a second? I have a second from Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We will move to 9G. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-24 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Annexing Atract of Land Described as 104.6 plus minus acres out of land, out of the Nancy Blakey survey, abstract number 898, Located West of Farm to Market, Row 969, is shown in Exhibit A, Providing for Findings of Fact, Adoption, Repealer, Severability, Filing and Enforcement, Establishing an Effective Date, and Providing for Proper Notice and Meeting. Madam City Manager?
Sorry, I would have loved to bring up the map, but it apparently causes things to crash. This is the Valverde subdivision I kept pointing to earlier today. It was mistakenly advertised the first time, and we advertised all 400 acres being built out and being annexed. They are only annexing Phases 1 and 2, which is 104.6 plus or minus acres.
Move to a per. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
By Councilmember Plunkett, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Any further discussion or question? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Council, a bit of good news for y'all tonight, we have no executive session. I'll let that sink, I'll let that sink in for a little bit. We will move on to Agenda.
It'll carry over to next meeting, Mayor.
Yeah, that's right.
Let's keep the excitement to a minimum.
Right, right. We'll move to Agenda, item 12. Move to approve?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I have a motion, I have a second.
I am officially taking that job.
We are adjourned. Thank y'all.